The Monday, April 24th, 2023 meeting of the Marquette City Commission is now called to order at 6:00 PM. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
City Clerk, roll call, please.
Commissioner Hanley?
Here.
Commissioner Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Otteh?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Here.
Mayor Protam Davis?
And Mayor Mayer?
Here.
Commissioners, can I get a motion to excuse Mayor Protam Davis for personal reasons? Commissioner Smith?
I move that we excuse Mayor Protam Davis for personal reasons.
Thank you. Do I have a second on that motion? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Second, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Brings us on to approval of the agenda. We have an agenda in front of us. Do we have any motions on the agenda? Commissioner Otteh?
I move to approve the agenda as written.
Do we have a second on that motion? Commissioner Larson?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. I have no announcements for this evening, which is going to bring us on to our boards and committees. We have one appointment and two reappointments, or I'm sorry, we have two appointments and two reappointments this evening. Commissioners, do we have any motion on the appointments? Commissioner Hanley?
Can I do them both together, or? I move that we appoint Kristen Shannon to the Marquette Housing Commission and Andrew Tripp to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, both for terms as stated, and I move that we reappoint Judy Burgland to the Elections Board and Stephen Schmunk to the Peter Wright Public Library Board of Trustees.
Thank you. Do we have a second on that motion? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Second, Your Honor.
Commissioner Hanley, any discussion, comment?
I would just like to thank them all for their previous service and for the new service. It's always great to see more people joining our boards and committees.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Just a great example, Your Honor, of Marquette residents stepping forward to help the city go forward.
Yeah. All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. That brings us on to our first public comment session of the evening. As a reminder to the public, public comment may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when giving public comment, and feel free to just approach the center podium here.
Good evening. I'm Susan Essler, and 342 West Bluff Street. To the City Commission and City of Marquette, from David Kronberg, Fresh Coast Light Lab LLC. As I'm working in Detroit during the regular April 24th City Commission meeting, Susan Essler has kindly offered to read this letter on my behalf. Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, Fresh Coast Light Lab is very pleased at the chance to become part of Marquette's Lower Harbor celebration with a great big light show on the Or Dock. I am especially grateful or gratified by the number of collaborators making this light dream possible. Susan Essler and her team at Travel Marquette, Karen Kovacs, Sean Hobbins, Peggy and Pete Frazier, and the talented tech creatives that are Fresh Coast Light Lab, Andrew Shirts, Dustin Berkman, Nell Slinquist, and Tone Drew. Light is precious in the northern latitudes, and Light Lab's quiet, dynamic light shows will augment our community's well-being, enhance artistic vibrancy, and celebrate the culture of our amazing city throughout creative storytelling with light and color. Thank you for considering the use agreement that Karen and Sean have thoughtfully created with the Light Lab. With your support, we'll be off to an amazing beginning with this innovative, creative, civic collaboration. Thank you, and very respectfully, David Kronberg, Fresh Coast Light Lab LLC. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Margaret Brom, 404 East Magnetic Street, and I have feedback to give the City Manager and the City Commission about the recent performance of two people who associated with the city. First of all, I see Chief Ian Davis back there and his fire department crew. I happened to encounter both of our city fire trucks and a truck from the gas company Saturday night after about midnight or so, when my neighbor at the end of the block reported a gas leak loud enough to be heard. So I'm sitting there kind of watching, you know, really old TV shows, and all of a sudden, Big Truck One comes in, lights are twirling, Big Truck Two comes in, lights are twirling, and I'm like, "Jettie, stay here. I'll go out and see what's happening." And in the midst of trying to deal with this situation, they very carefully explained there'd been a report. And the professionalism, Chief Davis, the leak was at the end of the block, and they parked the trucks in the middle of the block just in case something happened bad at the end of the block. Now, that's not how I would have thought about it, but they had already thought it all the way through. And it lasted less than an hour, and I went out one more time when the next truck came in, and that was from the gas company. But I was very grateful for our city fire department, their professionalism, and the fact that in the midst of a very difficult situation, because gas was leaking from an outside pipe, and it got fixed. They still had time to be courteous to a neighbor who walked out and said, "I'm sorry. I really don't know what's happening here. Could you give me a hint?" And without breaking stride, they gave me a hint, and it's really hard to do something like that under pressure, so kudos to Marquette City Fire Department. And I just want the people who sit up there to know that Commissioner Otteh volunteered, after I asked him several times, to come and talk to my class of northern students about his position in the insurance industry as also being a civil servant of the City of Marquette. I just gave him his ratings, because my students have to get credit for a visitor. They can't just say, "Oh, you know, you look good." They have to do a write-up of things they learned from him. They also have to give a write-up of whether they hired him, and he was up against stiff competition, because the other speaker was an inventor from one of our startup communities who had an invention, and she was, like he said, killing it. And he had my students eating out of the palm of his hand. Not only did he talk in matter of fact, the thing that really impressed him was, he assured them that it didn't matter if they didn't know what they wanted to do in college, because he never thought he would be doing the work he did. And also, on a personal note, he connected with one of my students when he mentioned all the travel he had done to disaster areas, and he mentioned a part of a state, I think it was North Carolina, and it turns out that that student was from a town there who he recognized very clearly, and that student's house had been destroyed in that disaster. And it's odd to make a connection like that in a classroom, but it was a positive connection, and I wanted to thank Commissioner Otteh for his contribution. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment?
Good evening. My name is Jacob Lees. My firm, Kendricks Bordeaux, is located at 128 West Spring Street and represents Mr. John Christensen, who could not be present this evening. I will be reading a letter, into the record, earlier sent to the commission on behalf of Mr. Christensen. Dear City Commissioners, my name is John Christensen, and I am writing with respect to the proposed ordinance entitled "Light Vehicle Equipment Sales and Display," Article Six, Section 54.628 of the Land Development Code. I owned and operated John's Auto located at 1004 West Washington, Marquette, Michigan, for 27 years. My dealership was a prime example of a thriving small business locally owned and operated. Under my ownership, John's Auto won numerous awards and accolades and was the premier used car dealership in Marquette County. Three years ago, I sold John's Auto but remained the owner of the underlying property. At the time of the sale, the purchaser intended to buy the property over time. I was recently notified by the purchaser that they now intend to move John's Auto at the end of the month to another location. My current intention is to sell this property to another car dealer, one that could benefit from the current infrastructure and proven profitability. Anyone who is familiar with the property knows that it is perfectly suited for a small dealership and not much else. I do, however, anticipate that this sale will take time, which could create a substantial hardship with respect to the proposed ordinance. As proposed, the ordinance requires a minimum lot size of 0.5 acres. My property, one of two car dealerships in Marquette, is 0.43 acres in size. It is unclear why the planning commission set this lot size. It seems to some extent like the city is trying to squash the little guy and prevent the next small business from gaining a foothold in the community. With respect to the impact on my property, it will not be grandfathered unless it is operated as a car dealership within six months of the effective date of the ordinance. Unfortunately, I am presently not permitted to operate the dealership at the property due to a non-compete agreement. As a result, the only option I have to preserve the ability to use the property as a car dealership is to find a purchaser who can establish a car dealership within six months. While I am hopeful, there is no guarantee that I can sell the property in this timeframe. If I cannot, the property will lose its only purpose. In light of the foregoing, I urge the council to reduce the minimum lot size requirement of Section 54.628A from one-half, or 0.5 acres, to 0.4 acres, so as not to exclude the historic purpose of the location, substantially devalue its commercial worth, and prevent the next John's Auto from getting started. Sincerely, John Christensen. Additionally, in response to a question asked by Mayor Mayer, I'd like to briefly clarify Mr. Christensen's position. The purchaser of this business had the right to buy the underlying property over time, but also retained the right to move the business. Neither option invalidates Mr. Christensen's non-compete, effective for a further 18 months. Furthermore, Mr. Christensen is retired, and establishing a qualified business during the vacancy period would prove an undue burden on him. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else for public comment? Okay. Seeing none, public comment is now closed. That brings us to our one and only public hearing for the evening, which is Ordinance 720, the Land Development Code amendments, which will require a roll call vote. City Clerk, if I could get the background, please.
Thank you, Mayor. On March 21st, 2023, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing for the consideration of a comprehensive set of amendments to the Land Development Code that had been the subject of several months of work and refinement prior to this meeting. After considering the proposed amendments and conducting a public hearing, the Planning Commission approved the following motion. It was moved by D. Federer and seconded by A. Andres and carried seven to zero, that after review of the Land Development Code amendments presented as Case 01-ZOA-03-2023, and after conducting a public hearing and careful consideration of the contents of the draft LDC amendments, the Planning Commission finds that the draft LDC amendments are consistent with the recommendations, goals, and policy objectives of the Community Master Plan, comply with Section 54.1405 of the Land Development Code, and therefore are justified and appropriate, and therefore should be approved by the City Commission as presented. On April 12th, 2023, the City Commission and Planning Commission held a joint work session to discuss the proposed amendments. The attached draft ordinance contains all of the proposed amendments that were recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. Fiscal effect, none. Recommendation, approve Ordinance 720 as recommended by the Planning Commission. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Does anyone have a motion on this item? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I'll bail you out, Your Honor. I motion to approve Ordinance 720 as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Stonehouse. And do we have a second on that motion? Commissioner Larson?
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Stonehouse, any discussion or amendments, anything like that?
I would only reinforce the point, Your Honor, that a tremendous amount of work has gone over this over a considerable period of time, that the effort that I think the Planning Commission has put into it, as well as other city entities and the public, has certainly been laudable and commendable, and will move the city forward. Thank you.
Commissioner Larson?
Yeah, I would just like to add that the Planning Commission has put a lot of work, and this is an ongoing document. This certainly isn't the first round of amendments to the Land Development Code, and I'm sure there'll be additional to come. So, I support that. I support.
Any other discussion or comments from the commission? Commissioner Smith?
I'm wondering if staff can comment on the public comment we just had by Jacob Lees, is that what, related to reducing, I'm sorry, I don't have the code in front of me, that particular part, but from .5 to .4 for this type of instance, you know, why we would or wouldn't consider that? Maybe some context there for the public commenter and for the general public.
If you don't mind, I will go ahead and kick that on over to Dennis Dekowitz, but then I also do just want to mention that we also have the public hearing component as well before we proceed with, I think, further discussion at that point, if you don't mind. But Dennis, if that's okay with you to go ahead and just speak on?
Oh yeah, sure. The minimum size of one-half acre was considered by the Planning Commission based on existing practice, as well as the lot sizes considered in the City of Marquette for these particular uses.
I guess I would have one follow-up question, if you may, Your Honor. Is there another way that we can accommodate this, or does that conversation need to happen outside of these public hearings?
I don't believe we would be able to come up with a real solution for one individual property at this time, but that probably needs a little bit more work by the Planning Commission, because that could be looked at as only dealing with one individual parcel rather than use as a whole.
All right, I'm going to add one more follow-up. If someone in this kind of situation, what would their next step be, then? Just to be clear, because in case someone else had something similar. Thank you, Dennis.
The limitation, as I understand it, without seeing any of the agreements, again, I was just informed of this at the end of last week, my understanding is that that property could be sold for anything other than a car dealership. I don't believe there is any restriction on that potential for the property to be sold, so we're purely talking about the interest in selling it as an auto dealership.
So maybe some further conversations with city staff? That's what I'm hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And as far as our actual public hearing session, if the commission wants to continue discussing things more in-depthly or has any proposals or amendments for this, we can do so after concluding the public hearing. But public hearing on Ordinance 720 is now open. Members of the public wishing to comment specifically on this item have three minutes to do so. Does anyone have any comments on this ordinance? Anyone for public comment? Legally, I have to ask three times, so. Anyone for public comment? Okay. Seeing none, the public comment session of the hearing is closed. Brings me back to the commission. Is there any further discussion or questions, comments on this item? Okay.
I guess I'll just say with that one caveat, and maybe hopefully working that out with that property owner, I just wanted to thank the Planning Commission for their work on this. I know I had to miss that last work session due to some medical issues, but I certainly appreciate the long time that our former planning commissioners and current planning commissioners have put in, and staff as well, so thank you.
Commissioner Otteh?
I'll just kind of follow up what Commissioner Smith had to say regarding this. The Planning Commission really spends a lot of time going through the details in all of this. As the public knows, we're probably not the experts when it comes to all things zoning. They are. I think, you know, when it comes to the recommendation being completely unanimous from the Planning Commission, I feel comfortable supporting this amendment to the Land Development Code because of that.
Anything else? All right. City Clerk, if I could get a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Otteh?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
And Mayor Mayer?
Yes. Motion passes six to zero. All right. Commissioners, that brings us to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion on consent? Commissioner Otteh?
I move to approve consent as written.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Hanley?
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. All right. That brings us to our one and only new business item for the evening, which is the Vault Development Agreement. Trying to think how we best want to do this here. City Clerk, if I could get the background first, and then Sean Hobbins, our Assistant City Manager, has a quick presentation for us as well, but I'll throw it over to Kyle first.
Thank you, Mayor. The Vault Marquette Brownfield Plan was approved by the City Commission at the July 21st, 2021 regular meeting, and amended reimbursement agreement was approved at the May 9th, 2022 regular meeting. The next item for consideration in relation to this plan is the development agreement between the Marquette Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, the MBRA, the City of Marquette, and Marquette Vault LLC for the design, construction, and acquisition of the public parking facility. This development agreement outlines the requirements for the design, site plan, construction, plans, and specifications, schedule, financing, operating budget, and other deliverables of the 212-space public parking facility, and elements of the surrounding development by Marquette Vault LLC, and the issuance of bonds to acquire the parking facility. Notably, this agreement requires the completion of the entire project within 40 months of the completion of all pre-development activities. This timeline has been reviewed by both parties and is viewed as an expedient development period given the magnitude of the complete project. The following are a summary of the basic terms and conditions. The developer will secure and provide construction documentation, including but not limited to title, survey, environmental reports, organizational documents, financing, site plan, permits, and approvals, construction contract, and preliminary guaranteed maximum price. The developer will also provide a budget for long-term capital expenditures and operating costs. The pre-development site plan will present descriptions of the points of ingress and egress from public streets, a plan for traffic management during construction, and estimates of traffic impacts on adjacent streets for approval by appropriate city staff. The Brownfield Authority has hired a parking consultant to provide technical expertise and advice in the development process, and shall review all documentation in a timely fashion. Based on all the pre-development documentation and review, the developer and the authority will execute a pre-development satisfaction letter for the design, GMP, financing, and other conditions. The developer will proceed with construction of the public parking facility with inspections by the MBRA representatives as necessary. A special assessment district will be established to ensure that the minimum bond payment can be met if there is a shortfall in Brownfield TIF. Upon completion of the public parking facility and acceptance by the MBRA, bonds will be issued to acquire the facility. The development agreement has been reviewed by the city attorney and was approved by the MBRA on April 20th, 2023 with a recommendation for approval by the City Commission. The operating agreement for the public parking facility between the MBRA, City, and Downtown Development Authority is under development. Fiscal effect, the implementation of the development agreement will result in a significant bond issue by the MBRA, backed by the full faith and credit of the city for the public acquisition of the parking facility using Brownfield tax increment financing revenues to repay the bond. Recommendation, approve the public parking facility development agreement with Marquette Vault LLC as presented, and authorize the execution of the document. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. I'm going to throw it over here real quick to our, what's that? Assistant City Manager, Sean Hobbins, who has a quick little presentation for us on this.
Thank you, Mayor Mayer. I just wanted to take a few minutes to update the commission and the public on the status of this project and kind of where we started and where we're at now. It's been a little while since we've addressed this. So the object at hand today is the Vault Brownfield Development Agreement, and this is the agreement that lays out everything about the construction and purchase of the public parking facility as a portion of that development. So it's going to go through an introduction, the public parking deck, and then the terms of the development agreement. This project was introduced in May 2021 to the city by John and Julian of Brave Works, who are in the audience with us, with their architect Barry Polson. It was a topic at several meetings, including a dedicated work session, and the Brownfield Plan was approved in July of 2021. The initial Brownfield reimbursement agreement was approved in November of 2021. In the months following, the project received a $1.5 million Eagle Brownfield grant and loan, and so we amended the reimbursement agreement in May of 2022 to accommodate that. agreement in May of 2022 to accommodate that. That did involve the Julians guaranteeing the project to a significant degree, to make us comfortable with that amount of money being received from the state with the city guaranteeing the project. So, we were very comfortable with that, and it was a step that we don't usually see in a project like this, but I think it was a very positive one. While that was going on, we were conducting a parking study from December 2021 through July 2022 to determine the feasibility of what was being proposed, to see if the onsite uses meshed with the idea of it being a public parking facility, and to make sure that the operating costs and revenue were in the right direction. There's also been a significant environmental review stage being conducted in conjunction with Eagle that started in May of 2022 and is ongoing. So, on to the public parking deck, which is really what this development agreement is concerning. It'll have 212 public spaces, a public entrance on Lake Shore Boulevard, the hotel dedicated entrance on East Washington Street, and of note, that has been moved from Front Street. Originally, you know, there was a lot of discussion about how traffic would be managed, how, you know, traffic would go in from Front Street, and how traffic going south would be managed with that. The new entrance off of East Washington Street, I think, solves a lot of those problems, and creates a more efficient entrance for the hotel. So, these are the updated renderings for the project. This is the, the lowest level. I think it goes slightly underground. I don't know how many feet. I'd have to refer to Barry for that one. But, we can see, kind of just stacks up from there. From the subterranean level to the Lake Shore Boulevard level, we can see the entrance for the public. Then, there's the middle level. Up in the upper right-hand corner, you can see the hotel entrance and how that is crafted off of East Washington Street. There still will be a walkway maintained to Front Street. I think there's a, a public entrance and exit for pedestrians on each side of the, the development. But, um, the entrance and exit for the pedestrians was onto Front Street was something that was identified as very important to access to downtown. And then this is just a side cut. If you were to be standing on Lake Shore Boulevard and, you know, looking through like Superman, this is what you would see. The parking study was based on 200 available spaces. The updated design is at 212, so this does add 212 total public parking spaces to the downtown inventory. The onsite development is going to produce 92 hotel rooms and 25 housing units. So, taking those numbers from those uses, the parking consultant took a look across the whole year to see what is this onsite usage gonna mean compared to the total capacity. And what they found is for peak onsite usage, and that would be midnight on a Saturday in August, when all hotel guests are checked in and tucked in, all residences are there, you're gonna see probably about 122 spaces being utilized, which still leaves about 80 to 90 spaces open for general public usage. Peak demand by month ranges anywhere from 72 to 122 spaces, but there's an average of 90 surplus spaces at any given time. What this told us was there would be significant sustainable usage for this facility, providing constant revenue, and it would be adding a significant amount of parking to the public surplus. Look at an estimating operating cost of $155,000 per year. This does include maintenance and savings for reserves for future larger maintenance projects. The estimated revenue is $180,000 a year, and that is utilizing the existing DDA rate structure, which was something that was requested by a member of that parking committee, now City Commissioner Otway. We do think the revenue potential is significantly higher due to the amenities this parking garage can offer, namely being that it is climate-controlled and totally free from snow and contained. So, the development agreement specifically concerns the construction and purchase of the public parking garage. This includes everything that was read in the background, the design, site plan, construction, plans, and specifications, the schedule, financing, operating budget, and other deliverables. Of note, the following elements are required for the pre-development site plan: descriptions of points of ingress and egress from public streets, traffic management plan, and traffic impact, impact planning. This is something that I'm highlighting because these are the concerns I really received from the commissioners with this project, is how is traffic gonna be managed, both during construction and once the, the building is up and operational. These are required elements of this pre-development site plan review process, which is gonna have a significant amount of staff review and approval, and we're pretty comfortable with that level of review and making sure Lake Shore Boulevard stays open, and making sure this facility is able to handle the traffic that it's proposing. The agreement requires a construction timeline of 40 months following this pre-development period. So, once that pre-development satisfaction letter is approved and signed by the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, all site plans are approved, the clock starts ticking, the construction begins, and we felt that was a reasonable and timely amount of, of period for this construction to occur. It's a pretty significant development that's gonna encompass nearly a whole city block. So, 40 months seem real, pretty reasonable. Upon completion of the facility, bonds will be issued by the MBRA to purchase the facility. This is backed by the city's full faith and credit, and funded by TIF revenue. So, that was all I had. It's kind of a brief overview. I consider it brief, at least, and we're avail, I'm available for any questions, and I know the developers are available as well.
Thank you, Sean. And Commissioners, I'm gonna request a motion before we ask Sean any questions, and I am open to a privileged comment for the developers as well. Commissioner Hanley?
I move that we approve the public parking facility development agreement with Marquette Vault LLC as presented, and authorize the execution of the document.
Thank you. Do we have a second, Commissioner Otway?
Second.
Commissioner Hanley, you wanna start us off?
I don't have a ton of questions. Everything was really laid out and very well done. I really appreciate the background. Again, it has been a long time since the project came to us in the first place, so it's always good to have a nice review of what's going on. I, the only question I have, I believe, gets answered during the operating agreement, which is having to do with if everyone is parked in there during the day, and there's no room for the hotel guests, then what is the question, what happens in that scenario?
Yeah, and I think that's definitely an element that needs to be negotiated with the, the development agreement, or the, the operating agreement.
Commissioner Otway?
Just want to say thank you to Sean, really, for all the work you've done on this over the last, well, few years now. It's been a long time, really, even going back to with the Julians and Barry. I mean, it was back, we had a previous city manager when this thing all really got started, so. A lot of moving and shaking, obviously, and a lot of stuff's been going on, so a lot of people involved, and it's, it's great to see the project finally coming together. Glad to see that, you know, we've really maximized the amount of parking spaces, it seems like, and it really seems like you guys have really worked hard to, to, you know, concede on some things, and, and try to make things work for, for all the neighbors and everything else there. So, that's, it's great. So, thank you to everyone involved, and I really would love to hear some privileged comment from them, if we can.
Commissioner Smith?
My question is about the traffic management plan during construction. I know we're not in the details, but either Sean or the Julians, could someone explain what the next steps would be? Not that we know the intricate details. I know former Commissioner Hill, not Representative Hill, has been and is still very worried about pedestrian traffic during the construction, so I just wanted to voice that again, because now, you know, as someone just mentioned, the city manager has changed, but I think, like, a lot of the Commission has changed over too, since we've started this project. So, that was a really vocal concern that we heard loud and early, and we want to make sure that that's honored. At least I do.
For the city component of that, you know, the, the traffic management needs to be approved by the city engineer. He's well aware of concerns about closing Lake Shore Boulevard during, you know, the extensive construction period of this. In terms of the actual construction period and what that's gonna look like, I would have to refer to Barry Poulson about that, or John or Jen, if you'd like to take it.
And just so it's stated, for the Julians and Mr. Poulson, I am comfortable with privileged comment if you guys want to say anything or answer any of these questions.
Good evening, Barry Poulson, architect. What we really anticipate is never taking more than half of the street. Like, we're gonna, we have to run new power lines up Main Street, so we'll probably start with that. So, half of Main Street might be taken up. Lake Shore will stay full, East Washington stay fully open. And, just as we do the project, we're anticipating, starting with the Savings Bank Building and the space to the south of it, between the, the neighboring building and that, where we had the drive originally, but now we're, we're gonna build there. And so, that won't disrupt much in street traffic at all. So, we'll be able to do that. We'll be able to use the parking lot to work on that. Then, as we work our way around the site, we're gonna start on the south side, so then we'll hit Main Street, and we'll work our way over. Then, we're gonna work on the north side of the site. When, at that point, Main Street will be back open, East Washington will take off just one side of it. You'll still be able to drive up and down it, walk up and down the other side of the street. So, and then, the, the last thing we'll do is build in the middle. There'll be periodic interruptions on Lake Shore, but just like flagman for, you know, a duration of a week or something, as we, you know, swing a crane out there, or that kind of a thing. We're not doing a lot of digging right up to Lake Shore, so. Yeah, that, it's gonna take that 40 months, for sure, you know, to build this whole thing out, because we do have to build it in pieces, so. But, that's our intention, is just, just to take one street at a time, and, and never take more than half of it, so.
Your Honor, can I ask a follow-up question, please?
Yep.
Specifically in pedestrian traffic. I know you kind of address it. I'm more concerned about pedestrian than I am vehicle traffic.
There, there'll always be the, the opposite side of the street. Lake Shore, the bike path, none of that'll ever be impacted. The north side of East Washington, that'll always be open, and then same thing on South Main Street. South side of Main Street, that'll just stay open. So, you know, there will be times when we interrupt the, you know, dig up the Main Street sidewalk, so.
Yep, and that makes sense. I guess I just would ask whatever we can do to minimize that. We had some, you know, back during the one and two Marquette Place, I think it was last summer, where we had the road closed and bikes couldn't go through, and we heard a lot about that as a commission, and I'm just trying to minimize where we have an opportunity to talk about it before it actually becomes written, and that's how it is, and, you know, kind of get on and, you know, get over it, and I'm not looking to do that again.
Yeah, the coincidence of the pure work, that didn't, I mean, that confounded the situation.
Thank you.
Okay.
And Commissioner Smith, that conversation about Founder's Landing, that really set the scene for what we've discussed in terms of a traffic management plan, and making sure there's pedestrian accessibility there.
Thank you, and it's no one person's fault, but, you know, as you're a commissioner with a lot of people wanting to bike and walk in an area, and you are daily hearing about it, you've gotta say something the next time it comes up. So, thank you.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Sean, and certainly for everyone involved. It's good to hear the detail that's been put into construction management, and how to deal with the trafficability issues that are so very significant to us down there. I might add that Marquette has not had a good experience seeing traffic management done for major projects. Commissioner Smith talked very eloquently, I think, about the difficulties we had with Marquette One and, and Marquette Two Place. Those are things that we can't really afford to have repeated again. We need to have and keep that very strong commitment to the, the idea, that the concept, that the roadway is for everybody. It's not only for the contractor and the developer that's doing the project at hand, but it also is for the pedestrian, the normal traffic use of that roadway. And, it is particularly evident when you come to weekend, and the projects are shut down for the weekend, everybody's gone home and left all their gear parked on top of the roadway. The bike path, in this case, blocking it off for other trafficability use. And those are things that we have to do a better job, and again, I look forward to seeing it, in managing how projects are put together, operated, and conducted over time. Because that, I think, will be, go a long way to release the public acceptance of a delay in construction that I'm seeing, I think, in one of the documents, Sean. 40 months would be a target goal for it. That's a really long time to have an entire city block of your city carved up in some fashion, at some time, in some rotating processes, it's built. So, certainly, extreme, not extreme speed, but deliberate speed consistent with safety on the project's goals will be critical for having this one come in. So, thank you very much, Sean. Thank you, you know, obviously the folks from, from Vault and the team that'll be making this work. Thank you, Your Honor.
Hi, John Julian, Marquette Vault LLC in Brave Works. And I think that's part of why we want to take the 40-month approach on the construction, is that each part has to happen sequentially for the next part to happen. You know, if this was a site that had, you know, lay-down space around all four sides of it, it'd be a different story. We'd be able to go in and kind of start on one half and work our way through, but with the way we have to construct the parking structure, and then the buildings on top of it, you know, we felt that this was the most efficient way to continue to have, you know, constant vehicle and pedestrian traffic, you know, at the least amount of impediment to it. And, yeah, we'll be very cautious and aware that there'll be a lot of eyes on us, and luckily, we're on the, the other side of Lake Shore Boulevard where there's less of an impact on the bike path and the walking path, so, you know, it should make it somewhat easier in that perspective. But I think what, you know, Barry talked about with how we're gonna attack Main Street, Lake Shore Boulevard, and Washington is kind of our, our way of doing that and minimizing that impact, so. Thank you for those comments.
Thank you.
Commissioner, Commissioner Larson, then Hanley?
I guess a couple, just a couple of questions. The first, East Washington Street, is that entrance, entrance only and not exit? Does everybody exit then down on Lake Shore? I see nodding, so I take it that'd be the case.
Correct.
And then the follow-up question, I think you answered that already just slightly. There's still some negotiation, potentially, for parking spaces. Right now, they're all public-use parking spaces? Is that, that's, that's correct?
Yeah.
But, negotiation on whether or not the hotel needs a reserved number, or the residences need, you know, guaranteed parking?
Correct. I think it's important to state, these will all be publicly-owned parking spaces, so any spaces that are, you know, slotted for hotels or residences, those will all be purchased, you know, from the DDA, who will be the managing entity for this. How that's all managed, hopefully, will be through a computerized system. If you've been to, you know, other cities, you can see a parking garage will have a sign that says, you know, total capacity, spaces left, and it can account for that through the computerized entry and exit system. But, that, those are details that need to be worked out in that operating agreement.
Two things. First, to piggyback off the parking spaces, will possibly be a situation like the other parking structure we have, where there's reserved spaces for certain things?
No, I, I, we're not anticipating, I mean, the DDA will be the operating entity, so I don't necessarily want to speak for them, but...
No kidding, no kidding. I know this is later.
We hadn't anticipated putting up a sign saying reserved for any, anybody particular use. It's, it's anticipated that the different uses will kind of naturally congregate in their own areas. The residences will go more towards the residence, the public will want to be up into the top, and then I think the hotel is gonna primarily utilize valet parking so they can really manage it through that system.
Perfect. And then the other thing was just to actually commend you guys for the way you're planning it out. Any progress is going to take time, and we are in a city where there isn't a bunch of space extra, but we still want to see progress. So, I like the fact that you guys are working to make sure that everyone is taken care of. I'm sure there will be hiccups. There is no fun when it comes to construction, and there's always gonna be someone that's not thrilled with where they have to walk, but I think you guys are doing it in the best way we could possibly do. So, I do want to thank you for that.
Commissioner Smith?
Sorry. I just, I was really focused on the pedestrian traffic, but I, thank you for, Commissioner Hanley, for reminding me that I also am very excited about this project. It's easy to kind of, you know, hone in on, on something that you want to mention and not forget, but I've supported this project from the beginning. I know there were some close votes along the way, and I can't wait to see it come to fruition. Thank you.
This is Jen with the Vault LLC in Brave Works. Just want to make a quick comment too. I know that, the, the building itself is going to take up a new city block, but as we wrap everything up, there will be improvements made to every street along the way. So, just a reminder that there will be improved access for pedestrians at the very end of the project as well.
Thank you. I would just add, I'm very excited that we're finally here. It's, it's been a while since we've been talking about this, but I, my, one of my initial thoughts coming into this was the 40 months seemed like a really long time, but realistically, if, it kind of sounds more like it's that timeframe to meet all of the other asks we had, as far as not blocking off an entire section of our town, and allowing for vehicle traffic and foot traffic to still exist, so. So yes, you have to build it almost in sections, but also accommodating that part of, it's a busy part of the city, too. I just want to acknowledge that, that that's partially why it's taking so long, because I'm sure you could do it a lot faster if you could block the whole block off. So I thank you for that. I appreciate it. Do we have anything else from the commission? Okay. All those in favor, please say yes. Yes. Any opposed? Motion passed six to zero. All right, and that brings us to our second and final public comment session of the evening. As a reminder, public comment, three minutes per person, and please state your name and physical address when giving public comment. Do we have anyone for public comment? Seeing none? Public comment is now closed. Which brings us to comments from the commission. I believe Commissioner Larson? Yeah?
Sure.
Yeah.
I'd just like to start out by saying that, you know, I think this, this project is going to be, it's transformative for that block. It's going to be certainly change the feel of, you know, the downtown, down to Lake Shore. I'm excited and I'm looking forward to seeing how it progresses, progresses. In addition to that, you know, on our consent agenda, we had, you know, the Fresh Coast Light Lab. That's, that's also going to bring a new component to what we are looking at, you know, for downtown or for lower harbor celebrations, and looking forward to seeing some of that. And then I guess finally, I just want to say is that we just recently celebrated Earth Day here in, well, across, across the globe here, but locally here in Marquette, you know, from cleanups, from, you know, the co-op to, you know, Commissioner, our planning chair, Commissioner Mittelfelt organized a little cleanup for the pedestrian corridor. And so it's citizens and folks taking initiative here in our community to keep our, our, our public spaces free and clear of, you know, refuse, and so thank you to her and, you know, that effort.
Commissioner Ottawa?
Wow, it's beautiful outside, that's all I got to say about that. Seems like we talk about weather a lot up here. I'm very excited to see what the development agreement, you know, really pushes forward when it comes to the operating agreement for, for the Vault project. I think a lot of the questions that were being asked here were, you know, kind of tailored toward that. So I'm really curious to see how that moves forward and seeing Tara here, you know, with the DDA, she's somebody that's been involved with this really since the beginning, so looking forward to that. Lastly, I will say thank you to Professor Brum for having me in your classroom. It was, it was probably just as much fun for me as it was for you and all the students there. And if anyone gets asked by Professor Brum to go speak in her class, or in any class, I would recommend it because it's extremely needed in our community. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
The only thing I have for Commissioner comments is that we do have an election coming up on Tuesday, May 2nd. The Marquette-Algera Risa Intermediate School District, which is Marquette and Alger Counties, has a ballot proposal to ask about increasing the special education millage, so I would encourage folks to learn about it and go on the Marissa website, M-A-R-E-S-A dot org, and learn more about that millage and decide how you'd like to vote, but I would ask that people think about it and actually put a vote in if you live in Marquette or Alger Counties. That is something that you are eligible to participate in. Thank you.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Just a thought, Your Honor. Short meeting tonight, certainly, but when you think of what's been accomplished over time and represented by this meeting, huge meeting, certainly one of the biggest we've had in a very long time. And I'd like to thank everybody that's been involved in putting the package together, putting the project together, and everybody that will be doing the project, because I think ultimately, we as citizens, we as citizens of Marquette and the entire area and Upper Peninsula will be benefiting from the completion of this project. It's going to be most remarkable, and we are very fortunate to be part of it. Thank you, Your Honor.
Commissioner Hanley?
I would like to say the same that most everyone else did, which is I'm really excited to see the Vault come to fruition. It has been a long time coming, and I'm excited to see the construction start. And then I do want to mention the big holiday that's coming up this Friday. I don't know if everyone knows about it, but our city clerk has a birthday, so. Yay, Kyle! All right, and that's good.
Kyle, I really thought we were going to start singing. I don't have too much more to add, other than I would also like to thank city staff for some, it's in our consent agenda, and it's a commission policy kind of standard for the committees that we appoint residents to, and really streamlining communications between the committees and the commission to help bring some recommendations to the commission, as well as the commission to ask our advisory committees to advise us. It's something I know several commissioners have been asking for, for a few years now. I'm just excited that that was on the agenda tonight. Other than that, I want to thank all of our staff for a lot of work on some of these items, and it is really appreciated. With that, I'll throw it over to our city manager.
Thank you. I do just want to echo that and really commend city staff for their hard work. They have put in a lot of, of time and effort into tonight's meeting, all these agenda items, specifically our, our big ones to get us, get us continuing moving forward if we didn't have enough already to do, right? So congratulations to, to city staff for, for seeing these projects through, and especially for Assistant City Manager Sean Havens. He's been instrumental in, in keeping us informed here in my office, but then also for the commission. I really couldn't have done this without him, so thank you. And then just a reminder for everybody to keep an eye out for the schedule for curb-side brush and leaf pickup. It is out there, it is starting this week, it is the sign of spring, so make sure you're paying attention to what is supposed to be put out this week and what is put out in the weeks to come. So with that, that's it. Thank you.
All right, and the time is 6:51, and we are adjourned.